Second.
Here.
Yeah.
Mr. Rouse, you can take off five C and five D if you want. You know, they're important, but we can keep the posted. I was, we want to cover a visit from the governor's office into the county on that date, on August 24th. But we'll have plenty of time to give that information. The business roundtable, we've talked before. At some point, the EDA might want a companion, non-supervisory, just totally a board that has its eyes and ears and investments in the community. It's, I've seen that concept work. We can talk about that at a later time, too. I don't say this anytime. I think that I. Five C and five D. And I'm not sure if Mr. Porter is going to be here or not, so you might have five B taking off as well. Oh, do I see one there? Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I apologize for that. Sure.
So, let's see. We had a recommendation that we modify the agenda striking five C and five D.
Second.
Oh, and May, May 11, too. Right.
Second.
Okay, so now we're in a meeting. So we've got, Kyle will present those today.
I'm here. Can you hear me? Excellent. Do I have the ability to share my screen?
Can you all hear me?
All right, let's see. Share screen. Where is it? Share screen. Share. Is everybody able to see it?
Yes.
Excellent. Well, thank you for having me. I'm glad that we're able to get this together, and I'm excited to be part of the meeting. I want to start off by saying that thank you to everyone who provided comment feedback on the document. We have received that. We have modified the report based on the input from those comments. And we will be sending over revised version of the document after the meeting tonight. We, I didn't send it over just in case there was additional comments that came through this discussion and that we need to address. But assuming, you know, everybody's good, we'll send it over as soon as we can. If there is additional stuff that we need to address, then we'll make sure we take care of that before we send it over. So, thank you. I just kind of want to go through in high-level terms, the document, the main findings that that came out of the analysis based on our phase one work, and that will set us up then to do phase two if the community is so inclined to pursue that. So, I kind of want to start, it doesn't exactly follow the report itself, but I felt like this was maybe a little bit more logical approach to take in terms of the conversation. So, I wanted to kind of start talking about the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats that we identified through our analysis. You know, there, there's, one of the biggest strengths that you have, starting with that, is having, you know, available property for non-residential development, particularly in the central garage area where you already have water and sewer service. So, having those assets is a positive. You are proximate to the three large markets. You're proximate to the Hampton Roads market, to the Greater Richmond market, and to the Washington DC market. You have access along Route 30. You have access along 360, connects you into the major interstates that connects you to those markets. And so, that's a very positive thing, particularly for both providing goods, the production of goods for those markets, as well as providing a location where those goods could be distributed to those markets. Your housing costs are relatively cheaper than some of your neighboring communities, and that can attract young families. And from an economic development perspective, that's a positive thing because these are working age folks. And so, it can help build your workforce, which will make you more attractive to new companies. You have plentiful raw materials. I don't need to belabor this. You all know what they are, and you all know what it means for your community, and you are taking full advantage of those. So, that's a benefit, particularly if there's ways to continue to grow upon those things. And the last one, I think the most, the, one of the more important ones is your water access for both recreational and then commercial through, you know, on the west end part of the county activity. And this could drive both increased economic activity as well as increased tourism, which then creates economic activity. In terms of weaknesses, you are on the edge of the Richmond market, and you do have a relatively small labor force right now. And really, from a weakness perspective, what that means is we have to be very astute about the size and scale of companies that we pursue. Not necessarily what we could pursue, but the size of those types of companies. So, you know, if we try to go after, for example, a 500-person firm, that could be more challenging when there are locations in areas closer into Richmond, areas closer into Hampton Roads, areas closer to DC, where the labor force is already much more plentiful. While we do have potential sites and there is infrastructure, infrastructure is limited in certain areas, particularly your fiber access, and that could be a challenge from an economic development perspective. So, some areas, and we, if, those of you who have been part of these conversations know, we talked about in the past, for example, on the west side of the county, the proximate to being I-95, to have particularly logistics-type businesses located over there, having access to infrastructure in that area, which is very limited right now, could be a challenge. And while we are proximate to the interstates, we're not immediate to those interstates. And so, we also have to be realistic about the competitiveness, particularly for businesses that are hypersensitive to transportation costs. And that has become even more important now than it was when we started this process with gas prices soaring to $5, $6. And, and, you know, if you read some news stories, it could get even higher than that. And so, at least in the short term, you know, those more competitive transportation locations could impact some of the types of companies that may want to locate here. Most of your non-residential properties are not inventoried or professionally marketed. And if you remember, we've kind of talked about this a little bit before, is having an inventory of everything that's available, particularly having things like asking prices, and having a single location where you, as a community, could help prospects, both folks who are looking within the community, those who you reached out to directly, and companies that are already there. Making sure you understand what you have, what the price points are, what the strengths and weaknesses are, is going to be important, both from that retention recruitment perspective, but then also from identifying ways to do additional investment, to try and make them more pad-ready or more development-ready. There are two primary roads through the county, and that's not a bad thing per se, but it does limit access, you know, 30 and 360. It does limit access to other parts. But, you know, frankly, there, those areas are already limited from the infrastructure perspective. So, it just, it further exemplifies that particular issue. And the county doesn't have a major medical facility or a post-secondary facility. And those aren't necessarily bad things, but, you know, areas where they want to have access directly to, for example, workforce training entities or businesses that are sensitive where their workforce, they want to have access. For example, one of the points that was made to us through the comments is an urgent care facility, not necessarily a hospital per se, but at least an urgent care facility where you can get additional medical services, particularly off-hours, that don't necessarily require a hospital or emergency room. From an opportunities perspective, you know, your quality of life is substantial. And I think there's a, we think there's a potential opportunity to attract telecommuters from these regional employment centers, people who live in DC, people who live in Richmond, people who live in Hampton Roads, and even beyond that, to offer them access to a quality of life that doesn't really exist in those marketplace, particularly at a more price-competitive from a cost of living perspective. That ties back into that conversation, particularly on fiber, because to be able to telecommute, you have to have access to consistent and high-capacity internet. And so, that's, but there's definitely an opportunity there, particularly in areas that are already well-served. I mentioned this a moment ago, so I won't belabor it too long. We believe that Western Route 30 has a potential for economic development growth, particularly around logistics and product development, product manufacturing with its close proximity to I-95 and getting it into that, you know, not even just regional, but, but frankly, national connectivity perspective. We, we've talked about this before, and I think it's worth saying again, the, the community, and it's been, and it was identified yet again in the comments I received, the community has interest in seeing additional retail growth. And I know one of the areas that we've talked about several times, and I'll show more information about it in just a moment, is in, in the pharmacy, the drugstore perspective. Well, our analysis showed that if we, if we want to be attractive to additional, those types of businesses, we're going to need to have additional consumers to be able to help cover their need in terms of sales to be able to do that. And so, it's not, it's not, the point here is not to have residential development occur everywhere and potentially impact the pastoral and rural nature of much of the county, but really take advantage of the, the access to infrastructure and resources and existing critical mass that's already begun and really maximize the efficiency of those areas so that we are able to potentially attract those types of users to our community. I've mentioned this already before as well, strengthening growing your recreational tourism market, particularly water access tourism market. You know, water is gold. People love being near it. People love using it for recreation. And there are opportunities to expand access to your existing water bodies. Regulatory programs to transfer development rights from no-growth areas to higher-growth areas. And so, this is one where, this is not necessarily saying that King William County has to increase its size in terms of population overall, but instead of having small, spread-out developments in those areas that you want to protect for ag land or you want to protect for pastoral reasons, allow those owners to maximize the value of what they are able to do by selling them to individuals that are in the areas that are more appropriate for maybe higher level of intensive growth. And so, overall throughout the entire county, we're not seeing a net increase from what's already in the comp plan, but we're just reallocating it to areas so that we can create that critical mass that will then make the community more attractive to potential additional retailers, for example, while also preserving that, that quality of life that we, we value so much. In terms of threats, you know, a lot of this is kind of opposite to the opportunities, the balance between your rural county and the growth necessary to achieve some of your wish list items. You know, I understand development, particularly housing development, is a sensitive and emotional conversation, not just in King William County, but in most communities. And so, you know, we, we, we want additional retail. We're not really excited about having more people. Well, at some point in time, we're going to have to reconcile the fact that one, which is more consumers, leads to the other, which is the ability to attract additional shopping and additional dining venues to the community. Imprecise zoning can allow for less favorable uses, and I'm going to pick on self-storage, is something that has happened quite a bit in King William County recently, and consuming some of your scarce land resources. And this is not to say you don't have developable land. You do, but much of this, we don't want to develop. And the, and the, and access to the infrastructure needed to accommodate development is limited to certain areas. And so, having something like self-storage come in isn't necessarily the most efficient use, the most effective use, and definitely doesn't meet the, some of the economic development goals that have been discussed through this process with us and that we've come to learn about through other conversations. Inefficient development codes can lead to large consumption of land, you know, very similar, you know, to what we just talked about in terms of imprecise zoning, but, you know, requiring of larger minimum lot sizes, you know, we can't maximize what the infrastructure underneath that land can accommodate. And so, as a result, maybe we're not going to be able to get to the level of activity needed to attract some of the other types of uses that we want to have. And then finally, the lack of organized marketing and inventory will preclude you from most site searches. I, I mentioned this before, and it's, I think, worth saying again, 90% of site selection these, this, these days is done online. They go, they investigate the types of communities that they're looking for. If King William fits within that parameters, they'll then come take a look at your county's website, your economic development website, and they'll look for the information needed to be able to determine whether or not King William is a community worth locating in. And if there isn't any information, or the information is incomplete or, or dated, that can adversely affect you without you even knowing that there's interest coming to you. I know we talked in, back in June, excuse me, back in May, about, you know, we want to get, you potentially want to get more proactive in going after companies, but that's only part of it. There are companies that are always actively looking for new locations that you won't even ever know about because they go through this virtual process and then unfortunately potentially eliminate King William because the information they need isn't readily available. So, that's kind of the, the summary of the SWOT. The next thing I want to talk about is the target industry analysis, and I'm not going to go through the whole thing, but I just wanted to, to remind you with this slide is the kind of questions that we ask to help try and identify the types of businesses that if King William County is going to proactively recruit companies, you know, which ones should they be? And so, these are the questions that we make sure that we answer through our analysis. You know, is it a local specialization? Is it adding jobs locally or regionally? Is the industry competitive to other comparative regions and the state? You know, is this something, if, do we have a location that this business is going to want to be in? Is it able to capitalize on the county's strengths? You know, for example, if they need to be immediately on top of an interstate, or they need to be next to an airport, you know, that's, that's not a strength that we have. And so, going after companies that have those requirements may not be going to produce the greatest amount of success for the community. And then, is the industry consistent with the goals? You know, and then this is a very important one, is as you look at what types of businesses, what types of businesses may want to be there, you have to weigh that against, well, is this really the type of business we want to have in King William? Because maybe it will affect the quality of life. Maybe it will affect the pastoral nature of our community. Maybe it could even potentially affect things like tourism. And so, we wanted to make sure that we were sensitive to all these questions. You know, we looked at several business climate factors, making, and trying to match them with the types of, you know, what businesses look for in a community. Obviously, the SWOT analysis that we just went through helped us identify, you know, potential opportunities and maybe even eliminate some other industries that are out there. And then, we wanted, we also did the statistical analysis. So, if there, the industry doesn't exist in the region or locally, and the industry is declining substantially in the region, it is highly unlikely that that's going to be a type of company that you're going to be able to bring in, as opposed to even if it doesn't look, exist locally right now, but it's growing strong either in the Richmond market or the DC market or the Hampton Roads market. You know, is there a connection where they might want to be here, or maybe a supplier, or maybe an indirect, you know, horizontal supply chain business may want, see this as a great location because it's more cost-efficient, because it is providing a greater value than maybe locating immediately on the interstate. So, these are the methodology that we took. And just as a reminder, as we, you know, to all of you, you saw in the document, you know, and this is not in any particular order, but the target industry clusters that we identified, obviously, transportation, warehousing is one that has the potential here for a number of reasons, but the most obvious I mentioned already is your proximity to three very large markets, three very large consumer-based markets, agriculture and forestry, forestry, and this is both on the production side, where, for example, obviously, you have the timber activity going on, but there are other, you know, more finished goods and refined goods, timber production that could be taken advantage of. You know, a culture, a county or regional agribusiness incubator, incubator, I know we, we were a part of a presentation a while ago where folks from the, the WIV came and talked about this exact issue. And so, it lined up perfectly with what we think could happen, which is how do we help identify and grow new agricultural-based businesses there? How do we help identify and develop new entrepreneurs that want to be in the agri-business industry? And how do we then also identify ways to build upon that with things like canneries or meat processing facilities? And so, how can we build upon the activities that we already have? You know, the, another area of production is upper market trends, you know, being located to those, the three markets I've mentioned, which are, have a substantial affluent population, is things like local sourcing, free-range hemp are all, there's a large regional consumer market that we want to take advantage of that. And if I have a restaurant in Richmond and I want to do local-sourced foods, well, King William is close enough that I can do that and still maintain that local source brand. And so, that's an opportunity that we have, environmentally-friendly products. You know, how do we take advantage of opportunities of some of the ag? Maybe there's a, an industry that we don't have right now and could bring in. And then, you know, we, we talked about this previously, the WUF, which is looking ways for organic food development. And it's not just organic to sell to like grocery stores or sell to consumers, but you can do crop shares. You can do local farmer's market for that organic and then bring people to the county that want to have that, that type of product from these other markets that we're talking about to help grow your, your ag businesses. And on the flip side of the coin of that is agrotourism. Obviously, alcoholic beverage production is huge, not just nationally, but regionally and locally. And so, there's opportunities to bring people in for recreational. That could be tied into not just agrotourism, but, you know, we come down, we spend the weekend kayaking on the river, and then we want to go to a distillery or brewery afterwards, because, so you're now creating that continuum of activity. Crop pickings, I know we have tree farms, but there are other ways to bring people to the community to pick their own. That is very big. I know, living in Northern Virginia, it's very big for a number of the families that we're friendly with. You already have this burgeoning, and there's a way to promote it and market it and grow it, which is retreat rendezvous centers, where you can hold, you know, a business retreats, or you can hold family reunions and those sorts of things. And frankly, with the riverfront, with the right venue, you could do weddings and events like that, which could be substantial revenue for a local business. Industrial, there are a number of industries that, of, of production-based industries that are thriving, not just locally, but regionally, that could be here with taking advantage of the timber that we have, pre-hab, prefab housing, wood product manufacturing, artisan and home goods production are all potential. You do have food products manufacturing. I mentioned earlier, things like canneries and, and meat processing, so there's opportunity there. And then automotive service and repair, because being located proximate to these larger markets and being a more, a lower-cost location, this could be a place where businesses like that can come and locate and then serve not just the local community, but could serve the regional community. We, we identified some, some unique research opportunities. Well, I shouldn't say we identified, which is building upon assets that you already have, things like Fuller's earth and local mineral for human uses to, to bring in entities that can look at, are there other uses for it than just cat litter, wetlands research? I mean, one of the benefits of where we are located between the two rivers, there's opportunities to tie in, not just with local colleges, but also the cooperative with Virginia Tech and the Ag and Extension Center. And how do we create some opportunities to bring in research that can potentially create commercialization of, of markets to, products to market? And then, the next is healthcare and social assistance. I know there was some conversation around, you know, we, we, maybe we have enough primary care physicians, but the reality is we don't have the outpatient or the urgent care facility that was identified through this process. The, the need for child daycare services is going to be critical, particularly with the young families that have found your community to be a, a location. Well, those folks need to work and they need places for their children to be taken care of before their school age. And then, as we talked about previously, and I, I know we saw in the comp plan, you know, we are getting older. And that's not unique to King William County. That's not unique to Virginia. That's, that's the United States with the, the baby more population aging, is things like community care facilities for the elderly or, you know, medical practices that may be burgeoning, not just in King William, but regionally, things like geriatrics, where we were just having a, a, a larger portion of our population are reaching those age groups. And then finally, is the entertainment and recreation. Everything from outdoor concert venues to physical activity like kayaking, fishing, and hunting. We talked about, you know, the idea of how do we tie together those recreational activities with the leisure activities, like the breweries and distilleries, and tie that in with, you know, events like family reunions and weddings. And that brings in demand for hospitality. And while we don't believe there's demand for like large 100 or 150-room hotels, there will be demand for those unique locations, particularly those that have great water views, to be things like bed and breakfasts. And then, you know, building upon that, you know, what has become popular over the past 10 or 15 years are things like camping and non-permanent lodging venues like cabin, cabin camping. And I'll be the first to admit, I'm not a sleeping-on-the-ground type of person, but my family really does enjoy cabin camping and going, having a permanent, and then being able to hike and kayak and do those outdoor venue things as a family together. And so, there's opportunities for that. And this is all really around tying together that, the, the quality of life that you have, that can build and, and make it stronger for your existing residents, and also then bringing folks to the community that could help drive up consumption, consumption of lodging, consumption of goods and services, which can augment that growth needed to maybe attract some of these types of retailers that we've been talking about. And, you know, I did want to bring this back up to make sure that everybody had a refresher on the analysis that we did around the leakage of supportable square footage. And I just brought into the moderate and the aggressive. And really, the point I'm driving home here is that, you know, while there is opportunities in certain areas, like, for example, restaurants where new businesses probably could be successful in the community, there, excuse me, there are others like general merchandise stores where the amount of supportable square footage based on our current demand patterns aren't sufficient to attract a whole new store. And so, you know, this is the, this is the, that balancing act that I mentioned, and I know there was a question in the, in the comments and feedback that I got around, well, if we bring in more families and they bring in lots of kids, that could affect, you know, the, the school capacity and that could affect fiscally. And, and I respect that, and I definitely understand that. And that's the, that's that kind of balanced conversation that needs to go on. Because my response to that is, well, if we want a pharmacy, if, or another pharmacy, excuse me, or we want additional choices in other types of stores, the reality, the only way that's going to happen is if we have more people that move into the community. And so, you know, that's the, that's the balancing that I'm talking about is, we're not saying you should. We're saying that if you want to see these things that the community says they wanted, unfortunately, the, the way that that's going to happen is increasing the amount of consumer expenditure, which is translated into new households that are going to spend money in these categories. And so, that's the reason why I put this back in, just because I wanted to make sure that we touched on this again. And as you move forward and, and try to start making decisions around, well, what types of business are we going to go after, or what's our strategy? Hopefully, you all have that, that base information so you can have an informed conversation around, well, are we going to do this, or are we not going to do this? The other piece that I pulled back into this is the results of the fiscal analysis, because there's been a lot of numbers thrown around that I've heard and seen. And I just wanted to, based on our preliminary analysis, to kind of bring back what we've learned. And so, when we looked at the fiscal impact and the, the. And so when we looked at the fiscal impact and the, the top tour for our residential analysis, based on the average number of children per house that are, that are coming to your community, you know, you need to have about a four hundred, uh, three hundred and eighty thousand dollar house to break even from a fiscal perspective, to provide education to the children or the point eight or whatever it is, and I don't remember the number off exactly off the top of my head, of children that are created on a per unit basis. And so there is a reality, if all your building is two hundred fifty thousand dollar homes, on average, you are going to have a net negative fiscal impact, because the amount of children that are coming in these new houses creates a greater demand on services than it does in terms of revenue that is generated for the community. That's absolutely a fact. Um, you know, but, and this is where I go back to, and there's a but is, but if we don't continue to bring more people to the community, things like the pharmacy, things like additional retail services are gonna be things that are gonna be out of our reach. And so it's the balance point, like what is, what is the most important thing to me, or what are the things that we wanna, uh, uh, achieve? And it's just a level of consideration that needs to be made as you make decisions on how to move forward. Um, the second area here is the break even analysis, just so you could see what, what it would mean for every household with a child, what the value of the house would have to be to be able to generate a quote unquote break even, where it produces enough revenue to address the expenditures that come with having to educate that child. And so the zero dollar means if they don't bring a lot of children, you know, the reality is, is that it's very little cost to the community. Um, and as a result, uh, you, you could do it on a very inexpensive housing unit. And that's the reason why at two fifty, the net fiscal impact isn't that substantial, because the data that we've collected shows that not every household that moves to King William County is bringing school age children with them. And so that's, you know, the, ours is based on an average, but you can see here what it would take, you know, based on a household of one, based on a household of two. And the top part is what the break even is when you average out what has been coming to the community. And then finally, at the bottom was looking at, you know, industrial and commercial, what type of impact? And this is measured on a per square foot of building space, cause obviously, you know, different buildings have different sizes. And so this was just calculated to show that indeed non-residential development does bring a net positive fiscal impact to the county, which I don't believe is a, a shocker surprise to anybody. So the other part, you know, that I wanted to touch on is, you know, some of those preliminary.
I'm sorry, are, I'm not seeing the slides advance.
You don't see the, you don't see the, um.
I see that we're still on the, the title slide, economic development analysis phase one overview.
Oh.
Um. Maybe should have been dropped sooner.
Yeah, that's, I, I am really sorry about that. I don't know why, I don't know why it's not, um.
Now I see swat analysis.
I'm sorry, I, I didn't hear, someone just said something I didn't hear at all.
Chris said you have to show the presentation up front.
Uh, let's see, you're sharing screen. I am trying to get to.
Kyle, are you taking comments after or we?
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. Um, okay, can you see the targeted industry methodology?
Yes.
Uh, how about now, can you see targeted industry clusters? Um. How about, now can you see fiscal impact methodology? I'm, I'm advancing it. Okay, I'm advancing it manually. So maybe I, I am super sorry about that. I didn't realize that you weren't following on the slide presentation.
Sorry, it's just when you started to talk about the numbers and I was just like, it would be helpful, but everything else.
Yeah, well, so here it is. So I apologize about that. Um, let me back up just a moment. So this is the retail FAP assessment moderate, uh, that I mentioned a moment ago with where the moderate was a thirty percent recapture rate. This column here is the supportable square footage. And then the average store size. So that's where I was getting at. You know, some like restaurants, the average store size is smaller than what the potential supportable square footage is. Whereas the top one, general merchandise stores, so what is supportable with our current demand doesn't reach what an entire new store would be. Does that make sense?
So, so overall, back to the restaurants, that would be a good play for us here?
Absolutely. I think, I think that, I, I think under the current leakings, demand for restaurant space. Yes, I think a restaurant or two, uh, probably would be interested in locating in King William County based on your current, current unmet demand levels.
And would you find that to be an owner operator based restaurant or there's chains? Obviously, you know, phase two of this, you probably get into which businesses for what numbers?
Yeah, I think, I think, I think honestly, you know, I could, I can answer that question now. I think it would probably be more likely an independent or, or a, or a destination type of restaurant probably would be more likely. Only because the chains generally also, they don't just look for leaking sales, they also look for traffic count. And so they're much more sensitive to having a minimum number of cars pass by in front of their restaurant per day. And they're looking at competition as well. And so it's not to say that they wouldn't come, but I think you would probably have greater success with a, a destination style restaurant located along the waterfront than trying to bring in a, a red lobster. Or trying to bring in an apple peas type of thing.
So then the type of, so if that's like a local restaurateur, it would be a building that's already established, like a strip mall, something with, to your point of five thousand to ten thousand square foot. It, they wouldn't be building like a red lobster, obviously would come in and do from the ground up standalone facility.
Uh, not necessarily. I think, I think the northwest corner of, and I'm giving this as an example, the northwest corner of thirty and three sixty, which is currently a vacant piece of land. I think a site like that could potentially bring in a, a, a restaurateur who would, wants to build something standalone, because that's the, the, the highest traffic visibility for both the three sixty and the thirty corridors. And so there's potential for that to happen there. I think once, as you move further away from that intersection, it becomes less likely because visibility is very important and traffic counts are very important, as I mentioned. Um, and I, I wanna be very clear, it's not to say that a, a chain or what's called a credit tenant, um, national based business wouldn't have interest. I just think that all things being equal, you probably have greater opportunity around a destination locally or, or mom and pop type of operation than those national chains, because they're, 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 they, they are much more sensitive to hitting those thresholds. Uh, those average sales per square foot thresholds. And their formulas in the experience of, with restaurant tours that we worked with in the past is it's a combination of both unmet demand, income level and, um, visibility, meaning how many vehicles are driving by every day.
Hey Kyle, uh, did I hear you say waterfront restaurants?
Yes, the idea of doing something that, that has a good view where they could build a restaurant and it has a, maybe an outdoor patio that has a view of the river. That's what I mean by waterfront.
I mean, that's, to me is way off in the future. I mean, I just can't picture one right now. I don't even know where we would locate one. It's all private developmental water right now. You, you know, I, I don't see that even ten, twenty years now, right?
So, uh, um, I wanna try to get us back on, on track and press on for, if, if that's, that's okay, right? So one, we have four questions here. So Kyle, you, you wanna keep on rolling and, uh, push us on through?
Sure, 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 sure. And, and so this was the, the fiscal slide where I was talking about the numbers, which I, once again, I'm really sorry that you weren't able to see it. But, you know, I gave you the gist of what it, what it says and what it means. Um, and this is in the report, or this is in the, in the appendix of the report. So you already have this information. And, and I'll be happy to share this presentation with, with me to get out to everybody as well. So the final piece I just wanted to was, was kind of the preliminary strategies that we came up with, which phase two, we'll get into substantially more detail and more discreet action items around these. But one of the things we said we would do is kind of look at it from a high level and give some ideas. And so from a land use perspective, um, you know, plan non-residential growth for the long haul. You know, zone land along three thirty and three sixty to accommodate future growth. There already is some. And we talked about this a bit ago, but I just wanted to reiterate, you know, particularly those frontage properties, how do we maximize their potential for the community? How do we ensure that we don't develop non, uh, 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 consistent uses next to each other? So we build, you know, a high, a, a high density residential development right next to an industrial area, which is gonna create challenges longer term. And so how do we be more strategic about making sure that we're building in, you know, the buffer so that uh, immediate growth and future growth can live harmoniously. Um, establish residential policies to balance the quality of life and community character. Once again, I, you know, I already talked a lot about this. I don't think we need to belabor it, but this is one of those conversations as a community, we need to decide what are the most important things to us and then execute accordingly. Um, the third thing was considering a light industrial zoning classification to buffer between those heavy industry and residential areas. I think there's also, the good thing about this is also creates from a light industrial perspective, it creates a zone where scale can be a little bit more appropriate, particularly to the current size of our marketplace. Um, the likelihood of a hundred or two hundred or three hundred thousand square foot user is not as great as a five or ten or fifteen thousand square foot user. So creating a zoning classification that, you know, allows that and maybe precludes other things, particularly as buffer locations between our more traditional in- industrial areas and our residential areas is a way that we can increase flexibility and increase opportunity while also preserving the existing economic activity that we already have. Um, and then finally capitalize on the logistic potential, and I, I've talked about this already um, on the Western Route thirty, but once again, there is some challenge there in terms of lack of some of the infrastructure needed out there. And to the point that was made just a little while ago, this is much more likely a longer term strategy than it would be immediate strategy. But, you know, when you do an economic development plan, you don't just do it for the next two or three or five years. You set in play, just like you do in a cop plan, you set in place things that you wanna see happen ten and fifteen and twenty years from now, so that it's documented and you say, okay, we're gonna make these investments or we're gonna make these land use decisions. And we wanna make sure that we leave this as an option, because this is something that is, is important for our community and it remains important to our community. And so just, uh, the next slide is just showing a map of the county, obviously central garage right there in the middle. Um, and the land uses that are there. And then, um, while there is some on the western side of the county, we think that there is some opportunity, particularly on that light industrial perspective, to be able to tie into its proximity to ninety five. And then the next map really is just showing a zoom in and, and identifying where we have industrial, this purple area, the opportunity to expand commercial, the opportunity, particularly along the front edge along three sixty and thirty, where we have water and sewer, and maybe the potential to wrap things like this industrial zone with a light industrial zone, so that it can create some buffer between residential and, and, and non-residential. And then finally, the thing here is, you know, the rural residential, medium density residential and, and mixed use plan unit development is consider increasing the mixed use and the medium density residential footprint, so that we can create a higher efficiency of the, the, the land that we have to create that critical mass, to then be able to maybe bring in some of those uses that we have expressed that we wanted. Um, from an asset perspective, really, you know, is, we already have sites that are, um, in the Go Virginia database. I believe they're all, um, level one or level two sites, which is kind of the beginning. We think that the community should consider, how do we make investments, whether it be to get more shovel ready sites, we're doing more of the, the, the grading and infrastructure, or even a potential shell building as a public private partnership, to get more level three, level four um, properties out there, because it's a just in time world. And businesses in particular are, when they're looking, they're not looking to do something one or two years from now, they're looking to do something three to six months from now. And the, and the closer we can get them to that, the more competitive we're gonna become and the, the more likely we're gonna be considered as a location. Um, I talked about expanding the industrial line, industrial boundaries in central garage. I don't need to belabor that. Uh, engage your ag community to explore the potential of value add economic development assets. We talked about what those are. Um, and I think there's an opportunity there that we could try and organize and see, you know, what are these ideas that we've put forward are probable, are improbable and what it would take. So then we can start creating very distinct action items around them. And then preserve our existing production based clusters through smart land use practices. And, and this goes back around that encroachment of incompatible uses and why we're recommending the consideration of a, of a light industrial district that we can then create as a, as a buffer between some of our large industrial users and areas that may become residential at some point in time. And then operations, fr- from an operations perspective, um, you know, and we've talked about this before and I wanna reiterate, reiterate again, you know, right now, we have a lot of goals that we wanna accomplish and we have very limited resources and we have very limited staff to do that. And unfortunately, they go hand in hand. The, the, the quote unquote, more we wanna do will require more dollars and it will require more uh, funded staff time to be able to do it. And so, um, in phase two, if we move forward with that, we'll be based on what we have now. Here's what we think we can accomplish effectively. And then here's what the next recommendation would be and what it would take to make that happen. And then if we have the next level investment, less, little staffing and to help you kind of prioritize. Uh, I know I've had a conversation with a couple of you one on one around, you know, we wanna try and do this, but the staff doesn't know how to do it and I'm a volunteer and I don't have a lot of time. And, and that's, that's legitimate. And that's not an issue that's just with King William County. That is something that is in almost every client that I work with is, you know, the, the reality of economic development is it takes money to be able to implement an effective economic development strategy. The, what I also like to remind all my clients is investing in economic development is one of the very few things a municipality can do that will actually create some level of return of that investment. So the money you put into economic development will help existing businesses grow, will help attract new businesses, which then can create additional economic benefit to the community, both from a fiscal financial perspective, but also from a quality of life perspective. And so, uh, the reality is we have to, one, temper what we wanna accomplish with the resources we have. Two, identify the resources we need to do the things that we feel are essential. And then three, identify ways as we become more and more successful to find ways to, can you do some of the things that we'd like to have, but maybe aren't necessary right up front. And so that, that really is the, the, the boiling down of the document. Um, this is just kind of talking about, hopefully you can see it. This is talking about what we will do in phase two, which is a much more detailed real estate market analysis, to the point that was made a little while ago about maybe specific site identification of where things could possibly go. Um, we'll do a more comprehensive, more detailed fiscal impact analysis as part of that. And then this, this, that is where we'll get into the very detailed, um, economic development strategic implementation matrix, where we get to more granular actor step, action steps, specific staffing recommendations and cost assessments, so that we can identify, well, what can we do now? What do we wanna do next and how much is that? And then what are the steps after that? As we, as we start moving from things that we absolutely want or need to things that we'd like to have, but aren't necessarily critical at this time. So I'm, I'm going to stop sharing my screen, uh, at this point, because I can't, unfortunately where I am, I can't see you and, and present all at the same time.
This, this was good. And so before you completely pull that down, uh, there was just one, the, if you go back to the incremental physical impact, this, this ties into a discussion we're gonna have, uh, in, in a few minutes, and I hope you can stick around for it.
Sure.
Sort of bouncing off the, off of this report, but, uh, can you just walk us through a, again and explain? Uh, I got the top line where you were talking about two hundred fifty grand a thousand dollars. What about the, the break even and the non-residential even of more interest?
Sure. So the, the, the top area is based on the average number of children, school age children that are produced in your new housing, what a house valued at two fifty, three fifty, four hundred thou- fifty thousand dollars would mean from a net fiscal perspective? Okay, but that's based on an average. So the second cluster, which is the break even analysis, well, what would the value of the house be, need to be with no children, one child or two children? And that we wanted to test using the model saying, okay, if we, if we, if they're, for every house with a school age child, you know, what does, what would the value of that house need to be to generate the, the incremental new revenues to offset the incremental new costs that are created by that household? And so that's what the, the, the zero dollars really only means that the cost of a new household that doesn't produce children is very, very low from an incremental perspective. And so, uh, you know, a house, even a, a hundred and fifty thousand dollar house creates a net positive fiscal impact if there are no children. School age children, mind you, that come with it. For a, a household with one school age child, and I, I apologize, I should say school age child, just to be very clear. it would be about four hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. So that would be the break even point for every housing household that comes in with a school aged child with it. And then you see the number for two school aged children and the impact that has.
I'm sorry. So then the actual average number of kids per household that are coming to the county is somewhere between zero and one?
Yes, it's, if I remember the number correctly, it's like point seven five or points. I don't know that I'm off the top of my head, but it's yes, it's somewhere between a half a kid and one kid on average for a new housing units that are coming to the community.
Thank you.
So what this is showing you is what the net fiscal impact is for every square foot of that type of space that is delivered to the county. So for every square foot of industrial space, it creates three dollars and sixty-six more, three dollars sixty-six cents of more revenue than it does cost. So that's the net difference between what the the projected incremental revenue is and what the projected incremental cost of the county to have that development there. So the math there is for a ten thousand square foot industrial development, you multiply three dollars and sixty-six cents by ten thousand and you get three thousand six hundred and sixty dollars. And so that would be the net annual fiscal impact of a ten thousand square foot industrial user. For commercial, it's five dollars and fifty-four cents or that ten thousand square foot user would be five thousand five hundred and forty dollars. And the reason why it's higher frankly is commercial properties tend to have a higher value, so they create more property taxes. And commercial also generates generally sales taxes, which has a net benefit to the county.
The point you're trying to make is that, is that industrial and commercial both have a net positive. There's no drain. And anything we can add is a benefit to the county finances.
Correct. And I will, I will temper that by saying, you know, as we grow in non-residential development, it's going to create jobs, which is going to create demand for housing. So while it's, I wish I could tell you it's just, it's binary like that where we could just do all residential or not all industrial, commercial. The reality is they kind of go hand in hand. And so as you create more jobs, you're going to create more interest of people who want to live in the community. And as a result, create higher demand for housing. That's, that's my.
I just want to make that clarification. Does anybody, we can go, we start with Eugene, if you've got any questions, write on there. If you've got any comments or questions.
Charlie, you got it? Are you okay with the report?
One question I have, I have to get back to the other. They just said, look, I've done all, I was in the break even reports. I don't want to coincide with you guys.
I don't know that they line up perfectly.
That's what I'm saying. I want to see both sides again because some numbers, I mean, two hundred fifty thousand dollar home, they know how we're going down. Just the cost of a two hundred fifty dollar home or a four hundred fifty dollar home, where it's material and all. And his numbers and these numbers don't line up.
So I think, I think what Charlie's saying is that there's some, there's variance. Some of us do.
No, I'm just saying it's two different.
Well, I think that was built in, I think, to Chris's presentation, what he talked about, that he just took a national average for a number of kids. So this is an actual number of kids.
Like he was saying here, two hundred fifty thousand dollar home. I've got a bit of eight hundred and sixty-nine and I think it's go higher, hold on. For the other aspect you used in the campaign, fire department rescue.
So I think that for us, like to, to.
This is totally white. I ain't, I ain't always.
Absolutely. And I was just saying for us, I think what's really important for the conversation today is just the bottom of the numbers, the industrial and commercial.
Right. Because they want them with kids, kids in schools and time. Always there to come, goes down, goes up, goes down. Right now, we're on this side, but sooner or later, we're going this way.
Oh, we're ready for it. That's the hard part.
I had a very hard time, I had a very hard time hearing that. Can you repeat it, please?
So in the middle, you're saying a household with no children has acquired a thousand dollars, zero dollars. But that's only, your only cost, they need to account the cost of everything. That's not the whole entire.
So the zero dollars really only means, if I'm understanding the question correctly, the zero dollar only means that when you, if the, the, the school costs are so much of the impact of a new residential unit is that if they're, they don't produce a child, it doesn't require a large value. Because the net fiscal, the net revenue generated from the house is is just from like, for example, the sales tax created by that household being there can cover their cost because the incremental cost of serving a resident that doesn't have children is fairly nominal. And so the zero dollars shouldn't be taken literally. What it means is that we can do a much lower value home of a household that doesn't generate a school aged child and still create a net positive fiscal impact to the county. So I wouldn't take the actual dollar out there literally because this takes into account how much sales tax does the household generate based on its income? And then it takes into account, you know, what, what does it cost to provide, you know, transportation services? And so the, the the average income of a household moving into the county, the, the personal property and the, and the sales tax generated actually can cover the cost of that household living in the community. So you don't need real property taxes to be able to have a net fiscal impact there. That's what it means. It doesn't mean you can have a free house. It just means that the net fiscal impact, when you consider all the different types of revenues generated by that household and all the costs that are created by that household are covered by the non-real property in revenues. That's what that means.
But I still feel like those numbers are, I understand. But also, like, when you're talking about fiscal impact within the households and all of that, what percentage do you do for, what do you want to get?
I'm sorry, me, can you, I said, what percentage for what? I, I don't, I feel like you being so far away from the camera probably makes it harder for me to hear you.
Yeah. No, she was just asking if there was any the possibility for difference in where the sales taxes collected commuter working base as opposed to a county that doesn't.
Is there a sales tax differential from a commuter working base as opposed to people who live and work in the community? Is that the question?
Well, yeah, so she was just asking if there was, if there's, if there should be or was any, any consideration for how people spend their money in a county like King William. And because that would then affect the King Williams collection of sales tax.
Correct. So, so we, for our models, we generally assume that a household is going to make sixty, about sixty percent of their purchases locally to where they live. And they'll make forty percent of their purchases either near where they work or at a preferred shopping destination or online where those, those sales aren't captured by the municipality. We could, in the model, I could easily change it to fifty and forty and thirty and see how that affects it. Absolutely. It's been our experience that sixty percent is actually a fairly conservative number. Research that we've seen and we've done, it's closer to seventy. But we use sixty just because we don't want to overstate the benefit. Now, and some, and to, if this is where you're going, to your point, some households will spend thirty percent locally and some households will spend ninety percent locally. It really depends upon the individual household. These are averages based off of both research we've done, research others have done and and are just frankly, our professional experience in having done this in a number of different locations.
So I would like to suggest one way to sort of reconcile Charlie's questions, your questions, Sarah, which might be, and I think this, I think this is true, that Kyle has taken an approach where he's tried to identify the primary components that affect things and say thirty thousand feet up and simplify things. Whereas Chris Couch has gotten into every single detail in the mission and really focused on building it up a layer at a time. And if my memory is correct, their answers, answers are not wildly different. And the fact that they approached things from different perspectives and got crazy different answers.
Well, and I will say, if I may add to that, me, if I may add to that is part of what we'll do in phase two is a much deeper dive into the analysis, to which I'd also be happy to take a look at the other work that was done and, and provide back to you maybe where their assumptions and our assumptions differ. So you could say, you know, okay, RKG did it, A, B, C, D, E. Chris did it, A, B, D, F, G. And RKG came up with this result, Chris came up with that result, and it's probably somewhere in between there. So phase two does include a much deeper dive on our part into that to, to, for example, one of the things we'll do is take your expenditure, your detailed expenditure report and go through it line item by line item and identify what is a fixed cost and what is an incremental cost and then measure the impacts that way, which will, which will improve the precision of our analysis. It, I can't imagine it's going to be wildly different, but it probably will produce different results once we make that level of a deep dive.
So I also think to, to the chairman's point earlier is that whether, I mean, I think we can all, depending on which analysis you rely on as your bedrock, we all know that the average home value that is being built is not sufficient to offset its costs. And I think that that's clear. For us, what we need to focus on, I think, is this non-residential development analysis per square foot where the we need to add the additional perspective to that conversation that yes, residential development at its current rates and current values is not producing a positive fiscal impact on the county. However, if we focused on non-residential development, industrial and commercial enterprises, then we actually could move the needle substantially in the near term. Very well said. That's very well said. So we're, we're at a point now where I think we need to either agree as a group to accept this and we're okay with it. And this provides, as Jay said, right, it indicates that there is a need based on the residential growth and very little commercial and industrial growth. There is a need to make sure that we're balancing as a EDA, bringing business to the community. And this, this is, is exemplifies the need, right? We're bringing, whether it's a half a kid or a whole kid, we're bringing kids to the county and we need to get them educated. And the way we're going to pay for it is with industrial and commercial. And so if we're okay with this, then we can move on. And, you know, we, I mean, we need, we need to be okay with it.
Look, I got one question, Kyle. Trying to solve each numbers. Are you saying the break even analysis, a house, a nine hundred eighty-six thousand dollar house with two children? That's what King William needs to have to pay for that, for that house and two children to pay its own way? Is that what I'm?
Yeah.
We're losing, the house is under nine hundred thousand dollars. We're losing. We're paying, they're not paying their way.
Therefore, we need to bring commercial industrial.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. That's, that's, that's obvious.
So even if it were seven hundred thousand with two kids, right, there's still, it proves that there's a need. I mean, there's, you know, it, right, we need, this is, this is the problem that we're, that we're fixing. So will we make a motion to accept this? How do we advance beyond this?
When do we go get them built again?
I think so. Except I'm trying to, yeah. But I don't want to, I don't want to do it if we still have unfinished issues.
When we actually get written back.
He'll distribute it tonight. He'll hit soon. I think, is that right, Kyle?
Yes, the revised document, I am ready to send it to you and to the county. It is because I made the changes based on the feedback that I got and I updated the report to reflect those changes and so it's ready to go.
I guess that. Well, we, this is. I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to accept RKG's phase one analysis of the King William County.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
I.
Hey, don't we have discussion? Well, we, we've been having discussion. I'm just, I'm having a hard time. We accepting this report, okay? As, as the gospel, so to speak, this is what King William, this is the way King William is right now. What, what needs to happen, he's suggesting ways to go about improving our situation. So this is phase one.
Yes.
And then we move on to phase two.
So accepting this, we can now move on to like get, get, get to work. So we, we could take it and run with it ourselves and or proceed to phase two with an approval. Well, we've, we've got, we approved it.
Approved phase one?
Yes, I mean, that's. Oh, phase two. I'm not quite as quick. Yeah, what's that? Okay, so call for names. We had a motion, we had a second. All right, you want to do a call, roll call, please?
Approved.
Approve.
I don't want to say no.
Yes. Yes. Okay, so the motion passes. Next, Kyle, I hope you can stick around for us. We've got something coming up that Jay's worked up that will, that will be of interest, I think, to you.
I'm happy to.
Next up, we've got Tracy Porter, who has.
Yep, I'm in the process of doing that. Hang on.
Um, so let's see. So we've got Tracy Porter, who has been very helpful to us on a number of occasions.
on a number of occasions. And I'll talk about something that he put me on a little bit later. But Tracy's going, gonna present to us now.
Good evening. I don't actually have a presentation. I was just going to be available to answer any questions by the board or anyone else on the Zoom about the way ahead on any kind of agricultural plans or programs. The last we spoke, we were considering a couple of options. One, which is very much needed, is a a processing, a meat processing facility for small farmers. Right now there's, it's over an eight month wait to get your, your goats or your hogs processed. And I hadn't, I hadn't sent, I fought the Zoom invite to two processors, two local small farmers. One is Chris Couch's neighbor, Tim and Becky Vaughn. And the other was Dennis and Sarah Williams. They both process pasture raised hogs, Berkshire hogs. And Dennis and Sarah, who own Bees knees farm in King William, they also process meat goats. The problem is the long delay in getting the, the animals processed on the slate to be processed. And the distance as well, they either have to travel to Culpeper or further to Harrisonburg or North Carolina to get their meats processed. So having a USDA or a state inspected facility in King William would not only help those, but also others in the, in the region. Because it would be a lot closer than traveling to Harrisonburg or Culpeper or North Carolina. So that was one thing we talked about. The other thing we talked about was, and we took a tour to Falkir Education Farm. They are an excellent model on what the county can do if they chose to have a a farm incubation, a beginning farming incubation program. So they can receive the training on how to grow vegetables and get those skill sets. But also, it's the, the county has a couple of options with that. They can either donate to local food banks like Falkir Education Farm does. In two thousand twenty-one, even though the pandemic was going on, they donated two hundred eleven thousand pounds of fresh produce to several food banks, some as far as Maryland. So some of the board members, or the EDA members attended that tour. And I think everyone will agree that it was, it was pretty impressive what they were able to do with one salaried person. Everything else was volunteer work. So those are the two, the two things that I had recommended. And I can answer any questions about that. But at this point, I just kind of need a little bit more further direction on how I can assist you.
Has, has Jay shared his motion with you?
Say again?
Are, are you aware of the upcoming item on the, on the agenda?
I saw it on the agenda, but I don't, I don't understand where we are with that.
Very interesting. Okay, so you, you're you, you should stick around to, it will be helpful.
Oh, I will definitely, that's why I was on here. I wasn't, I didn't know that I was expected to give a presentation. I came on here to
We're glad to have you.
Yeah, I came, I saw, I saw the agenda yesterday. And I think, I think I've read the the meeting, the notes this morning. I think I got it around eight forty-six when I got the Zoom link. So I'm coming, I'm coming in a little bit blind, but I'm here. And I'm happy to share any expertise or recommendations to the board on anything you present.
I'm, I'm sitting there smiling. It just, does anybody else have anything, any questions for Tracy? We're just so grateful that you've been so available and willing to give your time.
Well, I, what I would ask, though, I think I think I was unable to successfully forward the Zoom link. I think when they click on the Zoom link, it says that they have to, I forgot what message it was, but it was something about they had to be authorized to, to join the meeting. So I don't think either one of those small farmers were able to join the Zoom. So I'm not sure if that can be changed in the future. But I, I work with close to sixty small farmers on the, on the neck and middle peninsula who would benefit by anything you did here in King William. So I'd like to be able to, in the future, forward the Zoom links to these other small farmers.
Well, just, just sit tight. We've got something coming that you're let's see. Sarah, you were going to
You may want to go with Tracy, but Sarah isn't a member. Okay, I'll let you do it there.
All right, Tracy. Okay, so just an update on the farmer's market planning that I've been working on with the county administration. We have the July twenty-second and August nineteenth at the high school from four to seven. We have buy-in from definite guests from six local farms. So I have two maybe some that need farmers that really depend on their crop production. And then globalists that just as well. And then I have a bunch that are still kind of asking questions. So on the farmer. The county has been working on food truck and county incorporation, providing for the rec and the whole children. Their fire and so that. And as long as the EDA is happy with where we're going, we're going to send out a survey or a a new form for craft vendors and like sakers and artists.
It sounds, it's almost sounding a little fair.
Yeah, it sounds fair. So yeah, I think it's going well. Progress. Sending out that information to the factory partners. Sending out announcements like Twitter media and sending out a Facebook letter.
So what were the dates? You got the twenty-second, July twenty-second, August? Nineteenth, okay. Okay.
Question, just hanging on. Has anybody, well, right now, nobody has, that's why I'm asking.
I think we, so I think if I remember the conversation, I think they were going to wait to understand that there was interest that we could even do it before we
Okay, well, I would just want to, because they already hear about it, that's why I will break it up.
Sure that they are now that there's interest. So I mean, I think, who is the person who's going to reach out to her? Was that, was that going to be you?
No. I won't go on, I've just parents, so, you know, let's find the two questions.
Oh, I mean, I would just kind of as a point of order, it would be nice, you know, you're in the room, so it would be, I think, appropriate for you to kind of clarify any, any rumors that were out there.
Oh, there was one that was going on, you know, there's nobody talking, they're like, they're like that.
No, I don't think they're
I'm just, I'm just relating.
Wasn't there discussion about having it like at the end of the day so it wouldn't have backed down? Is it, what time is it this morning?
It's four to seven, they close at seven.
So
I just wanted to break it up.
Yeah.
I'll be back. Okay. I gotta take a pill at eight o'clock.
So let's see, so somebody, some, some, somebody from a group was going to reach out to Tommy, we, we probably moved that off the trolley. I think extending, but yeah. So, but you've got it and it, we, your, your work is great and we're so
I know, I know, I just wanted to make sure.
No, you don't, that's the, that's the right thing to do. We're thinking about it. Yeah. It's high on our minds.
Well, yes, you know, and we brought the platform.
This is a concrete thing. Okay, now we're going to
I do want to break it up.
I, I think that there, I'm remembering at our last conversation that we were going to wait to this meeting.
To see if we had anybody, if it was even happening.
I have a, I have a question. This is Tracy Porter. I, I really couldn't hear well what the discussion was about the survey. I think I heard a survey was mentioned and to gauge interest. Like I said, I, I work with a lot of small farmers in the county as well as in the region. And I think if I was allowed to send a survey out or provide you with the list of names, I'm not sure you're capturing all of the potential interest in the county.
Right, so, so Sarah, who you know, Sarah Williams is, is spearheading this effort. And so if you wouldn't mind just giving her a ring directly, I think she'd be grateful if any help.
Yeah, is, is Sarah present or, because I gave her the Zoom link.
She's a member of the EDA. She's a hardworking EDA member.
Okay, I was not aware of that.
Yeah. All right, so let's see, so is there any more discussion around this farmer's market? Any more discussion? Okay, I think it's great. All right, so the next item on the agenda is, is a Zoom that Tracy Porter put me on. And I might, I think I sent the link to everybody. Through Chris, perhaps. But I, it was a two or three hour Zoom. And it was three, it was a, it was three experts who talked about the need for meat processing, the financing of, 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 of meat processors. And then the structure, how, the best way to structure you know, things to consider when, when you're putting together one of these things. And I, I, that evening at eight forty, I sent Percy email and to think what I just said, that I listened to meat processing webinar tonight. I'm, I'm reading this email. It was super informative, lots to share, initial reactions. There is need and funding for meat processing. Cold storage is beneficial. Many state and federal grants and sources to stack, right? So there are many funding sources we could stack up. Could fund most hard and soft costs, with hard costs are like bricks and sticks, soft costs are engineers. Could, could, could fund most hard and soft costs with grants and federally insured loans. Third-party feasibility study is a requirement to get the, the feds and the state involved. So there has to be a feasibility study that needs to be complete as a precedent, as a condition precedent to, to applications. And there were lots of benefits that I heard to structuring such a thing as a cooperative. It, everything from engaging community to ownership to, it just, it keeps money in, 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 in the community as opposed to bringing in a, you know, big corporation that, you know, money may leave, may, may leave the county. And so anyway, I I, I share that, it was interesting and I, I think that there might be some opportunity there for us.
So, Mead, I had promised in the planning meeting, maybe April, to contact the, there was a processing facility over in Essex, I think. And I contacted them because they did, I think, a value-added grants feasibility survey to see if there was need for them to become USDA inspected. And so I think that there was need and they got the funds and they are ready. So she, she messaged me back and said, we are one hundred percent ready. All we need is the inspection like the walkthrough, but we have so much business that it's not worth it to us. So they have so much custom cut business that it's not worth it for them to have a USDA inspected facility, because of course, that's a lot more paperwork, right?
Yeah.
But that's still needed because you can't sell custom cut meat at a farmer's market. You can't sell it wholesale. You can't sell it to restaurants. You can only take your animals there and eat your animals. So I think that that preliminarily demonstrated a really strong need in the area still. If they got all of the funding and they became compliant and they still don't need to be compliant because they're so busy.
So can I just tell you, we are so fortunate to have you sitting here with us, right? Just to follow through and just, you just get it done. And it's just, we're very fortunate to have you. Glad, glad you're here. All right, so let's see, so that was my update on meat processing webinar I attended. Project prioritization tools. I might need some help to Could I move that we suspend the rules and consider the next agenda item? That seems to flow to start talking about the, the piece that I wrote and sent off. Well, I think that's a wonderful recommendation. If everybody's good, but I think we have to have a second motion quickly. Okay, all in favor? All right, done. All right, so Jay, when you talk to us about your motion, thank you for this Robert's real cheat sheet. Very handy. So I, I, I sent, put something together. I spent some time, it was really just because I had this conversation with Mead after I think the, he had attended the, the meat processing. Yeah. Yeah. I called him all excited. And, and I was, Gene and I were, were lucky enough to, to spend some time with Mr. Porter going to Falkir to, to both look at the the, the, the demonstration farm. But then I think even, even more importantly, in my mind, we, we had lunch at a, a local farmer's farm stand store that, that was a, a local farmer had kind of built a business around, you know, their, their agricultural enterprise, which was just kind of all, all exciting. So as, as we were reading through Kyle's recommendations, and I was just, I guess, in my mind, trying to figure out how to kind of put all these pieces together to, to kind of think about how we could take some steps forward, just kind of in theory. You know, we, we, we've got some really good ideas and I really like the idea of saying, how could we as the EDA take advantage of, of some of the information we learned about the meat processing facility to, to perhaps put a meat processing facility or locate one in one of the target areas that Kyle has identified for us in, in, in phase one. It certainly, I think, fits very nicely in the target industry clusters that he's identified through that study. If we could find a, a location to, to start the, the meat processing facility that now we know is a demonstrated need in the community. And then we could begin to kind of, you know, hang things on top of it and grow it and expand it and add, you know, we could add a, you know, an educational component for local farmers who are trying to get started. You know, you could, you could add things to complement, you know, some of the you know, the other resources within the county. So when I, I was putting together, I think it's more of an aspirational statement. It's certainly, it's a motion. It says, kind of summarizes, I think, what we've heard from, from Kyle, what we've heard from a, a couple of different places. And then gets to a motion of saying, hey, look, let's get to phase two of the RKG study. Because I, I think we officially need to adopt that motion at some point.
Yes.
Assuming that we, the, the board appropriated the funds.
I think if we adopt this motion, it's, it's one of the first things that
The board agreed, it was part of your
It was part of
your budget request. And they said, cool, great. And then kind of goes into some more aspirational things that I think are just more you know, saying, affirming some of the things that Kyle has told us in the
saying, affirming some of the things that Kyle has told us uh in the in the RKG study. But I but I think, you know, the the idea, the impetus behind it was really having participated in the in the the trip up to to Fok here, um, learning more about the the need for the meat processing, really thinking that that could be um, something that would add tremendous value, be economically viable, it would fit what what Kyle has told us in terms of what could work here from an industry basis. And I think if we can try to cite it um in a place that that, you know, Kyle was suggesting we go to, it could really be um something that could not just add value in the community, but say, hey, look, you know, the EDA is here. We're we're doing some really good work. Um, so I put that motion forward just to say, hey, let's get into the next, the next part of this study and maybe try to advance the ball um on on trying to identify a site for this this meat processing.
But here, I'm I'm I'm, what I'm thinking, what I'm questioning is whether we should read this thing. Before we open it up for discussion. Just the question, like, so if we, so it's, let's get down to real life. So if we add a meat processing, and I'm not against it, it's just that, so if we add that, then hypothetically, more people would grow sheep than votes on the five and ten acre, fifteen acre homes. You know, but as far as making the county more revenue, it would be maybe additional feed, maybe another vet to the area, maybe fencing supply. Well, I think it was bigger than that, because the 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 motion is aspiration was more Jay's, right? But it 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 identifies, but what um, it sets out an objective of having King Williams uh be a agricultural agricultural hub, uh, what, the thirty seven, right? And and levering the assets, doing doing all the things Kyle said. So I I I wonder, would it make sense, do you want me to read this?
Question I have, what you were saying, is that gonna go? I don't, you know, I can see a meat, but I don't think you want it on industrial side where you want to have meat going off. Have any of y'all ever been where you can process animal? You know. Yeah, I'm talking about.
It works.
You got what you're in, it's getting, what you can do with all the excess stuff, you know, around the people, you know, I'm just.
Well, seeing the meat, it's in Harrisonburg downtown.
Okay, I will, I'm just, you know, dodged away because I'm done at all.
It's not dirty.
No, no, I I I process cow bakes and everything. But I just, you know, you have a smell, you have odor, you got stuff you have to deal with. I just don't know if that was something we want in front of public, that's why I asked.
I only ask, I'm totally down there, you know, the hanging things like you said off of it. Who knows, like ag complex, like one day it gets going, you know, collegiate things.
But also, I think from revenue to the county, I mean, the it itself is a is a business. And even as a co-op, I mean, I think that that's not a not-for-profit, that's a, I mean, that would be a tax enterprise. So I mean, there would be sales tax or, you know, whatever.
Real estate.
First, all the rest.
The 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 piece that was emphasized on the webinar was, to to me, was that it engages the agricultural community. And it could, right, so everybody has a piece of it. And and they said, it can be a little bit, I mean, you're talking with farmers who are very independent and strong world, right? So there's there's some compromise, right, when you start working as a as a co-op. But the benefits are so strong that it works. And so you end up keeping the money in 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 the county. It it allows farmers to get more vertically integrated in the process. So they're not just selling to somebody, right? And it just, it 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 was pretty exciting for them.
And I think it's it's an opportunity, and, you know, hopefully it works and certainly, again, aspirational and theoretical. But, you know, to to start to sell this to people, you know, you 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 say to folks who might have an interest in in or people who might be threatened in some way by by starting something like this. You think of the same kind of situation like we're running into with the farmer's market. But as a co-op, now you say, well, you know, come on in, buy, you know, be a part of it, you know, and and.
I'm sure.
Buy a shard, be be a part owner, you know, be a part of the growth. And and I think that that in and of itself is a is a great way to just get people on board because if if everybody's sharing in the benefits and the revenue and the profit, then um, it's good for the county. It's good for the farmers. And of course, we, you know, we add a a service that's tremendously needed for for farmers who would come here from outside of King, you know, to process there.
I think it's a great idea too. My uh, I guess my big question is, as a farmer, what, and as a system of, what? What does the EDA really do, right? Because not, not, I, how would the EDA be a part of this? So the assumption is if we, you know, you have to find somebody who wants to apply for the federal loans and all the grants and and all of that, and that's great. And that, you know, that's easy enough to watch for, but it's easy enough to put somebody on that path. But we have to find somebody to put, we have to put somebody on that path.
I I mean, as as the EDA, I think that we're we're a qualified entity to receive those grants. And I think that with what some meager resources that we have, you know, we could go find somebody. And I know that Tracy has said that he's known the help and and has some expertise here. I mean, if we we found, I mean, grant writers exist in the universe, you know, and we could, I mean, we we contract with them in in my work quite a bit. Um, so I mean, I think there are folks who are out there that we could tap to to do the grant writing, to to develop the proposal with with technical expertise from Tracy and some other people who are at the table. And then really, the the input of the EDA is going out and trying to identify, I guess, the initial members of the co-op, you know, and and trying to 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 build the pitch deck um and get out there and and sell the idea. Yeah.
Now, it's just processing my meat to sell or my meat for myself. I'm just clarifying.
A lot of them do both.
Okay, I didn't know what you could do with that, that's why I was asking.
And I mean, there are a lot of things to step, like you could start with just doing hogs and big chickens. And then you can move into also doing chickens, because there's nobody on this side of the mountain that does USDA insured chickens outside of Austin, right? So for the small farmer, you can't do it. And Farm Bureau has an issue with the assumption. So like, on the farmer's side, chickens would be a good thing. Um, but then you could get into like value added things like dried smoked meat that you could sell at the vineyards. Capicola.
Or orange or. Just goes.
So you could, I mean, there's a lot, I think it has legs. I just, I think that the EDA using their time and effort is useful, but maybe we don't even need any funds for it, right?
So so there are, and and this is one of the things that got me so excited with, you know, with Jay, was that it there there are resources, state and federal and loan guarantees. I think we could, if we if if couldn't get a hundred percent of the hard and soft costs paid for, it'd be damn close. I mean, there are a ton of resources. And 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 so um, I, there there may be more, but I I know, I I listened to a webinar with a with a financing expert, right? And we, and I, we, one of one of the people on there was organization and they, the businesses setting these co-ops up. And then and and I just, I I think we could get it.
Can Kyle bring up something about some type of survey or study that had to be done before you go further with it?
One of the things that the webinar said is that there's a condition precedent to making making application, federal, federal and state applications, is you have to do a feasible with the study.
Okay, it was some study, that's why I didn't remember.
You're definitely, but that's that's a that's a discreet task that wouldn't be hard, somebody like Kyle would.
I just knew something else had to be done first, that's why I would have skipped it.
So where 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 um, like trying to put all these pieces together, right? So you we've got Kyle with the phase two, which could help us identify and dial in the components and how that works and where the site is and help um, help there. Um, we've got these other resources. County's got some money that 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 we could use, right, to get this to make this stuff happen.
Now, this USDA inspector.
We're just starting with there's a need.
Well, no, I'll ask her if I would just hear it.
Yeah, we need to. Um, but Virginia Value Added, or maybe it's the USDA does a value added program where they base on feasibility study.
Yeah, we had some money in here called, that's true.
So even that was.
There's another one in Middlesex, it was inspected.
They could be, but they don't need to be until they have it, because they're so busy with custom size. And we are driving on Friday, six hours to North Carolina to drop off this and call, because that's the closest we can get. And I haven't.
It doesn't make sense, but. He is saying to tell. What doesn't make sense? Right? We've got somebody local who's driving, you know, middle of the night, I just, if we, there's money available and we got, we got plenty of land, we got, I know we got landowners that. I think. Well, interested, we can make it happen.
So I I was looking at um, the motion. And I thought it was really interesting, art, um, I just had like two questions, which are, one was very specific and one was very general.
That's fifteen years from now.
So specifically, a couple of years ago, Chris Capps reminded me of this. A couple of years ago, somebody in the county sent out like a survey to farmers about pulling together with a farmer's brochure.
Luke.
Yep. It was like. That was an EDA sponsored effort. It was it was it was an idea to really just try to put a map to just uh raise awareness about anybody doing on-farm sales. Just so that we could try to drive the pop, the public to those.
Is that thing still out there? Like, is it, can we still access that?
Somebody, uh, I, it's a, yeah, there there.
I'm gonna.
So I think somebody threatened or something and concerned, I don't know, but it just kind of, we lost, we lost that. And and we lost, you know, we lost that information. And so we don't have it. It um, so it would be a good thing to do, we thought it was a good thing to do when they, when they had it together.
Well, at some point, I think he had even contacted, when uh, this Tastmary was still here, there was a a young lady who was actually working on designing the brochure and that she was a a, she was like some kind of marketing or PR or graphic design.
Could be Melissa Anderson.
That that's it, so she actually might have it.
She might.
But I don't know, I think. Because I do think.
She's still got work for her.
Because I think that we had even authorized Luke to take steps with her to to facilitate, you know, even, you know, paying her for her time.
Yeah, she was still on it.
She might have that in that.
I mean, the concept is great, but nobody cares about her shirt anymore, like a map online would be cool.
Right, that's, it's all the same place, right?
Yeah, but like, I think it's a great idea. And like, let's say, for example, Fok here town, it does like a case of Fok here town. These counties come in as well, where they go around the different farms and do like little for one a month for the season or they have tastings there, so could bring visibility. I mean, if we're really talking about needing to like focusing on agriculture.
Makes total sense, and that ties into Kenny's internet, like, push. All of this, I just, so, you know, so the internet's in here for Kenny, you you that's that's engaging the. I I just, it's all here, I mean, there's something for everybody. So the motion, that hasn't been written. If if we were to make the motion, I guess, we're either accepting that format or we can have a separate one for just the package. Well, so if the the motion that's on the table is is what we've been voting on. If you want to make modifications to it and and change the order to, you make it make a a motion to to change the words, right? And and barring that, then what's on the table is the most, you know, this is the motion discussed.
Yes, my interpretation of the motion was that it it included the the meat processing facility as the general idea, but wasn't very explicitly related to that. Right?
The the idea was the agricultural law, is that right? Right, to 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 lever all of the existing industries that we have.
But that's the only other question I was. We could have the public comment.
So I, I like the idea, so I think the processing, I think it's got a lot of the just, shouldn't there be a, so we're breaking it out, to your point, it'd be like a motion to uh proceed in further investigation on the package facility as to where, how, and then ultimately, how we can grow and learn the profitable place, profitable where. Like, there's easily six, like, just saying, no offense to the ag, I work in business, it is not, yeah, I'm sorry. Um, just because someone's booked out today, you know, six months, twelve months, their seasonality is the business. I mean, it's got to stand alone, I mean, we can't fund a a losing account.
No, absolutely.
You don't need to find an interior.
Possible.
Yeah.
But I will say it's done like this for as long as I've been a part.
I'm not, I'm not doubting it, I mean, it.
A year out.
It's enrichment. I mean, I've I've had a customer who, and that's a lawnmower shop, they have freezer and sausage that I used to buy. I said, you grow these? No, I just bought them at auction. And I brought them, because they probably West Virginia rail state line, he just brought them there and they make the sausage and everything. And you just put them in the freezer and I bought them. So.
So I think the the reason, I think what what I was going for is, I think that there's a number of things that would have to happen kind of simultaneously. So there there are a lot of questions about the the meat processing facility itself. So we we have to do a feasibility analysis, we have to do, you know, numbers, knowing that Middlesex has already done one, we're pretty confident it'll go, we still have to do that work, right? Um, at the same time, there there would be broader questions about where does it go? You know, how big is it, like, what is the building? You know, stuff like that. And we could be moving along a path to try to identify a a center for ag and ag adjacent stuff. Thinking that the meat processing center that we're pretty confident is necessary, could go there as an anchor, uh, an anchor industry enterprise that that would be profitable. Um, with the help of Mr. Porter uh and members of the of the EDA, you know, who obviously have some expertise in the area, I think that we could guide, you know, the the development of that that center so that, yes, I think that the assumption is that the meat processing is kind of the centerpiece. But as we move down the path, that there are other things that make good sense to do in addition to, or even instead of, you know, we have the ability to pivot um based on the information that we receive in public comment process and the feasibility study process. Uh, Tracy shows up tomorrow and says, don't do that, do this, we say, yes, sir. And, you know, however that could be.
Wouldn't it be easier, especially if it's easier to to kind of pitch it, like other counties say, they have a coffee shop on the corner? Wouldn't it be easier for us to just go out and say, it's what we'd like to see in the county, who would like to, as an entrepreneur coming with? And we're like. So let me, I I I think what Jay is suggesting here, uh, I'll try to, I'll try to do a pretty high level with thorough overview, right?
Could respond to that. Yes, so so the reason why I think that that is not the approach here is because, as I understand it, eligibility for the grant funding is not, is is not for an individual proprietor. Like, you could, as a, as a president of the EDA, I want, hey, I want all the state federal money to to stand up my shop, right? So that's why the EDA needs to be involved, because we're the conduit of the the financial resources that is necessary to go to that scratch.
That makes sense. So this this motion starts by outlining. So this, this motion starts by outlining the bylaws for the E D A, right? And it identifies the purpose and it says, it, part of, part of the purpose of the E D A is to, he's highlighted things. To induce manufacturing and further the use of its agricultural products and natural resources, right? So that's, that's, that's the, that's their state's hour mission. And then there are two whereas, right? So talks about creating a robot, a robust, uh, financial base for the county. And then there's another whereas, which is we've received this report from R K G. And it goes through and, uh, the, the preliminary economic development strategies, and that's, that's highlighted here, right? Uh, it talks about the assets in the county having ready to go, recommends, uh, be more competitive, having to go, having ready to go assets. Focus on one or two sites. This was all part of R K G's, uh, recommendation. Engage, uh, key site owners, expand industrial, light industrial boundaries in, uh, in central garage. Engage agricultural community to explore potential value added economic development assets. Examples were a processing facility in Cannery, um, cooperative, uh, uh, partnership and cooper, with cooperative extensions. Preserve the existing production based clusters. Let's see, and then, then it goes through the operations, right? This is Kyle, you know, ended with that in his presentation. And the next steps, it, it, just, this is pulling right from Kyle's, Kyle's report. And then the meat of the thing is where, is where, uh, this, um, motion then moves into the therefore. Therefore, I move that the authority further its purpose by inducing manufacturing that will further the use of its agricultural products and natural resources. By concentrating its efforts, uh, to establish King William County, uh, prominence as the regional, or a regional hub in Virginia for commercially viable and financially profitable agricultural based activities by twenty thirty seven. And then to accomplish, to accomplish the proposed agricultural objectives by twenty thirty seven, the authority will engage R K G to complete phase two. Work in cooperation with other local jurisdictions. Focus on one or two sites in gateway locations, uh, Route thirty south of, Route three sixty south thirty. Uh, focus on, uh, ready to go assets, expand and light industrial, uh, boundaries in central garage. Engage key site owners. Engage agricultural community to explore potential value added economic development assets. Preserve existing production based clusters. Fund, uh, let me see, funding, identify funding resources to accomplish the goal. Uh, it just goes on. So it, the meat processing is just a piece of this, right? It's, it's much broader, I think. And so it's a, it's aspirational, as Jay said it, I think. And so it's on the floor and I get, we, we need to figure out what we're gonna do with it. It, uh, we, we, um, if everybody likes it, is okay with it, then, then somebody, at least somebody second it. If we want to revise it, then we need recommendations on revisions.
I think a lot. I just wonder, does it limit us in like where we're true things about? To just, just really focusing on agriculture, which is, but also other industry and, and other opportunities, are we going to miss that?
That's what the manufacturing part is, right?
Or part of our inducing manufacturing, that's, that's in our mission statement.
Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I'm sitting here listening and, um, I, I, you know, we're, is, is a meat packing plant the centerpiece of this? It's just, just a broad motion to try to attract some industry in the county. Not necessarily meat pack. Here's what I'm thinking. How does, I know we need industry, but how does the public will react to this? I, I can't help but think that. They're gonna, this is just me thinking by the average Joe, they're, they're gonna put a meat packing plant in central garage? What, what are they thinking about? I mean, I, I'm just, I'm just the average Joe, I guarantee he's gonna say that. How do you, how do you answer that and pose that, how do you sell it?
So I think when it comes to the, the, what we're proposing, and I would see it not necessarily as a core proposal to go do a meat packaging plant, right? We think that that's something that could work as a part of this. But what I think this is, it's, it's, gives us direction to, to kind of really start working on something. So the, the thing, the, the things that are in the motion are, let's do phase two of the R K G study, right? That's gonna identify hopefully a number of things for us to be working on.
Number of, number of industries.
Sure, but we think that, so what the, the.
Different types of.
Right, the meat processing plant, I think fits in what we've heard so far, right? So that, that's a part of the direction, but I think there, there's other parts of what we're saying, which is that we should be doing. Having the conversations with the local farmers and the local public to, to better understand what the needs are. So that, working with local landowners and all that. So I don't think that it locks us into a meat processing plant. And I don't think that what we would come out of this meeting with is saying, we just decided to do a meat process. I think what we're, what, what I was going for is I think we, we've seen some really good ideas that could work in the county. And I think that we've learned that there are programs out there that can provide resources so that we could make something happen, not easily and not quickly, but, you know, we, we could do something that, that the run of the mill, you know, person off the street couldn't. So, so let's get to work to try to figure those things out. And I think that what this motion does, it just kind of points us in that direction to kind of get started.
So this motion includes, it says prioritize target industry clusters and transportation and warehousing uses like distribution and fulfillment, and fulfillment, fulfillment centers, cold storage facilities, agricultural and forestry opportunities, uh, like county and regional agribusiness, incubators, agricultural upper market trends, local sources, free range, hemp, et cetera, environmentally friendly products, soybeans for tires, wolf, agritourism, uses like distillery breweries, wineries, crop picking. It's, 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 there's, there's, there's right much here.
There, there's parts of it that are what we already did by accepting the R K G phase one study. So in, in some ways, it's a little redundant to an action that we already took. Because a lot of what I was writing in here was like, I was, I was very excited about what R K G told us.
Yeah, I think it's well, well written, yeah, I mean, I, very well written, I'm just.
Agricultural educational opportunities that fits into, yeah. Full as earth, local minerals, but, you know, it's, it, there's literally something in here for everybody, I think. So what, what are we gonna do with this? Um, do we want to move this forward?
That's a plan, I think I understand that those are.
You're good with it? Yeah, do we need a motion? I mean, this, this is, this will be like our first thing.
Well, I think the easiest thing on the other side, and it's beneficial all around for schools, it's part of, I like to see the green.
It's, 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 uh, agricultural education opportunities, which is right there. Point to that.
The schools, I think we're done with that, and we give one kid to Shawnee every, every five to ten years. We find a season that's, that's, so.
Right?
And now what I am with other counties I've talked to, I can't think of what it is. The flower, take question time, the red, point seven, point seven, right?
Which was it?
Uh, they grow down each a little. I mean, so, so, not the county that make money, but the school that come out of here.
So I guess to make, I start really practicing. So I'll, I'll make a motion to accept Jeff Ryan's, uh, proposal of, uh, agricultural enterprise in a, including businesses in our direction for future E D A's attention. That's great.
Okay, all in favor? I guess we do need a roll call. Chris? Okay, why don't we do that?
I, I think I'm in favor. Yeah.
Hi. Yes.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yes. I think that's the best. That's really good, Jay, thank you. You did a great job on this. We should probably share a copy of this with Tracy Porter and, and anybody else who wants it. And, uh, and Tom. So, yeah, we are good, so, so, yes, so we're good for phase two. So we're, we're ready to advance on phase two. Okay, so let's see, um. One of the things that is on, on the desk in front of everybody is how to write a motion for a board meeting. I pulled this off the diligence, which is a, a software that, um, I use related to something. And, um, I, I, I think that we've been pretty productive here today with this. And so I've just offered this, so I'm glad to help anybody, you know, work on a, work on a motion to, to bring forward, you know, a future meeting. Okay, so, um, do we need to have a closed session, don't we? Yes, yes, so I need somebody to read that, whatever that's here, it's right here.
Meeting in accordance, accordance with section two point two dash three seven one one A one of the Code of Virginia to consider personnel matter involving the appointment of individuals to boards and commissions, specifically the Economic Development Authority.
Thank you. Yes, all in favor?
Right.
Yes, thank you. Don't dig on there.
We're back on, we'll hang up, okay? Mr. Chairman, I move that the King William County Economic Development Authority Board approves standing resolution one S R one in accordance with section two point two dash three seven one two D of the Code of Virginia nineteen fifty as amended, certifying that the closed meeting was conducted in conformity with the requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act.
What do I need to do?
I move to do that first.
Okay, all in favor? Need a second? Do I need a second?
A second.
Okay, thank you, all in favor? Motion passes, okay. All right, so now, um.
We do have to make our recommendations.
Yeah, somebody's gonna, somebody's gonna do that, just gonna do that.
I put my other motion back on the table.
All in favor? You have to read it.
Hi.
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 Hi. Okay. We need a, I move, uh, to recommend to the Board of Supervisors that they consider for the two open positions on the Economic Development Authority, Ms. Elizabeth Copeland, Mr. Brian Hodges, and Mr. Strawn Robinson the third.
I correct three names for, for two, for two seats. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, motion passes. Okay. Second please, okay.